Dispense it up to two and a half ounces of prepared marijuana during a 15 day period to a qualifying patient.
Senator Haskell, my, if you ask a caregiver how much marijuana they can sell to a patient, they will generally say two and a half ounces every 15 days because that is what is built into the statute. That was the intent of that statute and it was also as required of the dispensaries, which is very clear in statute, two and a half ounces every 15 days. And that's all, by the way, that an individual can have on their person is two and a half ounces. So this amendment creates parity for one thing and it also makes clear in law, what I believe the general practice is, for figure of need.
Yes, Representative.
Thank you, Senator. So how would this translate into like oils and things like that? There's no specification there so far so much because here from some of the caregivers, it takes a whole lot more than two and a half ounces to make some of these preparations. So can you reiterate that for me?
Yeah, and so not being a cultivator or an manufacturer of oils or edibles or anything, I do know, Representative Haskins will speak to that, but I do know in working with dispensaries, we require dispensaries to formulate a plan to determine how much prepared marijuana is going into an edible or is going into a tincture and to be tracked of that in their inventory system, in your sales system, to determine how much a patient has received over 15 day period.
Can I invite Catherine Lewis to speak to that? Might be able to give us some, don't run out too fast.
Hi, my name is Catherine Lewis, I'm with Medical Marijuana Caregivers in New England, I'm a caregiver. As, can you ask again?
I was just curious because it says that a qualifying patient can only have two and a half ounces dispensed, a caregiver can dispense up to two and a half ounces of prepared marijuana in a 15 day period. So what happens in the situation where someone has an oil that, or an edible or some sort of preparation that takes more than that? How is that all going to get figured out? Like if I had a jar of oil that takes three, you know, can you understand what question?
The finished product would definitely be less than two and a half ounces. The problem being is for the patients who want to make their own medicinals, if they came to me as a caregiver, I can give them two and a half ounces. If you're making a cancer treatment, it takes at least one pound, if not three, for a full treatment. So these patients would then be put in a position where they have to be outside the law and holding on to the two and a half ounces. They have to wait 15 days and wait another 15 days and wait another 15 days to try to accumulate enough of the raw material to make the amount of oil they need to do a treatment. You can't start on these treatments and then stop and then wait and then start again for it to be effective. As a caregiver, if I have the appropriate materials and licensing, then I could make the oils for them, but it's going to take that same amount at one time, but the product that's getting to the end consumer may only be 60 grams versus three pounds.
So virtually everybody's, if they need that much, they have to be illegal somewhere along the line, unfortunately.
Representative Henderson.
Yeah, thanks. So we were talking waivers today, big waiver day. Is there some thought about some kind of waiver where people aren't qualified, have some qualification and patient mix who want to head into this territory? I don't know, naturally most caregivers are not wading into this kind of territory. Is there some kind of waiver that would allow this kind of use without expanding the whole?
Somebody speak to this round?
Sure. Ken Albert, you see, the department is the only ones to look at a waiver process that would look at, under those circumstances, authorizing the creation of that particular cancer treatment.
Representative Sanderson.
Thank you. In the meantime, what are they doing?
We could build the waiver process into the statute and the probably the rules. I mean, if they wanted to call in, we could do this directly and we'd be that we could, we have the authority under current law and have to look at that more carefully, but see if we have authority in the current law to come to waiver for that particular process. It, I would like to think that the law, the current law would not prohibit a patient from receiving the form of medicine that is most effective for them and if that's the most effective form for them, I would like to find a way to make that happen, is what I'm saying.
Would you allow yourself to comment on that?
All right, let's plug that for now. I, Representative Herron.
Sure, I'd like to come up with a moment.
Senator Brinkley, my name is Dan Walker, I'm attorney with Credit Flaherty, Representative Wallace, Commissioner of Maine. Just wanted to say that dispensaries do operate under that two and a half ounce every two week limit and so if you are considering lifting this, then you should be lifting it for the dispensaries as well so they can all operate under the same, same thing. But if you're not, then we would also operate under this waiver process, keep in the limit for everybody and then everybody can operate under this waiver process. Either way, just make it the same for everybody, that's all I have to say.
I do think that's a good point, that if it's a, if it's a good policy, it's a good policy for one, if it's bad policy, it's a bad policy for everyone and let's try to whatever we do is try not to.
Just keep it the same. Thank you.
So, all right.
Senator Brinkley, just in response to that, I do believe that the department in the current law under section 2423, subparagraph eight, creates a, an exception for a patient who has, in their medical marijuana, an exception to the criminal code. So I think we could probably work with that statute to work there to create a waiver system in the interim to address that issue.
All right.
Okay, moving on to section 22, three, department approval or denial. There was new language under, in the new language in that chapter, there was a little question about the words where it says, "The applicant has, quote, acted in bad faith with respect to," we'd like to change that to, on the third, second line that's underlined, line eight, to this chapter, "Or the applicant has violated the laws and rules governing the use of marijuana." So "acted in bad faith with respect to" will be crossed out and changed for "violated."
And Representative Sanderson, I remember that's because there was concerns about what's considered bad faith and just trying to make it clear, but.
Yes, violated the rules, it's not called faith, then act in bad faith. Okay.
Thank you. Representative Gattin.
Are these issues as we go through the things that have been agreed to between you and the department and the Department's economic catch?
Okay, moving on to section 34, on page nine of the bill. The replication of a caregiver certification card. In the instance where a card may be revoked by the department, there was concern on part of the individuals of whether somebody would be required under B, section B, line 36 and 37, to, to dispense with their own medication if they were cultivating for their own. So Mr. Albert and I have agreed to have language stating, "A primary caregiver whose registration card has been revoked shall, in accordance with this chapter, dispose of all medical marijuana in any form," and then we would add, "for designated qualifying patients." And that would allow them to keep their own, for their own personal medicinal use. Page 10, section 36, here's where it gets fun. Okay. Under, um, in compliance, okay, under section three and four, registered primary caregiver penalties and registered dispensary penalties. On line 15, where it reads, "Not less than 200 and not more than 500 per day must," we've agreed to change that to "may," be judged. And then line 16, 17, and 18, that will be deleted. On number four, same thing on line 21, that word "must" will be changed to "may." And then the sentence is, "Each day of the violation constitutes a separate offense and following a person at the time of the violation provisions found, chapter class D crimes." Those will be deleted as well in those two sections. Five and six stay the same. To have clarity regarding when these penalties kick in, on page 11, we will add 10. And we will be adding language, asking the department to develop rules regarding technical assistance, which would help individuals come into compliance, findings, and corrective action plans and lay out their process for that.
So, develop rules, write a specific system.
Um, the findings and a corrective action plan in the case of any findings of deficiency.
If I may also, just for information purposes here, so they come to the compliance section, sections, the department in and of itself does not have jurisdiction to impose these fines. We would have to petition under the current statutory framework, petition to district court and so it would be a court of law that would determine whether or not the department could carry its burden of proof to secure these fines.
As a clarification, that would only be after a finding, deficiency, plan of action was executed, yet not followed through on behalf of the individual.
On going non-compliance.
Absolutely.
Representative Gattin.
Thank you. So again, there's no, there's no proposed changes in section seven?
Explanation.
Section seven?
I'm sorry, the injunctive relief section of the compliance, I'm sorry, section 36.
Okay.
Basically, getting to line 39, going to the next page, line 20.
I did confirm with the Attorney General's office that this language is the standard language and the rationale that was given to me was that, again, when is a court order of, and if somebody, it should not be contingent upon taxpayers of the state to prosecute a situation where somebody's violating an existing court order. So in that case, it shifts the burden over onto, it shifts the burden to the individual who's been brought for injunctive relief.
So this, so this is if there's already been a court order and the person remains out of compliance?
Or if we are pursuing a violation, we file a petition with the district court, we have an interim order, or we file a petition for injunctive relief. And by the time we get to that point, generally, it could be either of those situations. But in either, in either case, the philosophy is, or the basis for the law is that it should not be the taxpayer to bear that burden of pain for that type of injunctive relief.
And I understand that, I understand the philosophy and the idea. So I'm still trying to understand the, you know, how this analogizes with other, other healthcare entities, that the department, that DLRS actually has oversight over. So, for example, you know, there's, the department has the ability to go hand in hand with the Attorney General's office, Superior Court, and seek receivership over nursing homes or hospitals. There are probably other places in your regulations of other entities that DLRS regulates and licenses. And again, other specific provisions in those statutes and in those regulations that'll allow these particular entities to see fees and costs when the department, Attorney General, will forward and seek injunction to receive receivership or impose fines or anything else analogous to this. That's actually where I'm trying to say, how similar this is.
The last time that I recall, the department, the division pursuing that was with a licensed childcare provider, home childcare provider, where there was ongoing, operating over numbers on an ongoing basis, multiple rule violations over and over, finally went to petition for closure, emergency closure. She failed to respond to the emergency closure order, went back to court for injunctive relief for yet another order and at that point, that's when we said, that's when the Attorney General's office wanted to impose this particular provision of law. And we sought that out in court.
And what happened? Was it granted?
You don't know the answer.
I'll load up the question.
I was so excited.
I think the court reduced the overall fine for her by didn't impose the cost.
I'd like to see where, in the rule of the statute, it actually gives you the specific authority to do that. Because maybe there's general authority to do that and you don't need that language in statute and you can have that battle someday when you actually take one of these entities to court. Just an idea, I don't know, Ryan, thanks.
Senator Haskell.
Thank you. In section nine, there was a question at one point about the ploneness of evidence as opposed to beyond reasonable doubt of the unconvincing or evident language, aren't they?
We're on page two?
I am on, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, on page 11, on the very last, line 15, on page 11. Ploneness of the evidence, this term that came into question and the question was whether or not we needed a different legal standard there. Beyond reasonable doubt of the unconvincing or something like that.
This is the administrative burden, Senator Haskell, so the reason we actually sought to clarify that is in working with the courts because of the criminal violations that may result, as a result of behavior of operating outside the Medical Marijuana Act. There's confusion around what burden the court would apply in administrative proceeding as opposed to a criminal proceeding. So we were finding ourselves having to challenge the court on the burden of proof. So this is the lower burden of proof, the criminal burden, obviously. So that's why we just wanted to clarify as a good point for a judge pointing to a section of law to aim that judgment, an appropriate burden for administrative proceeding.
Additional questions, discussion, philosophical comments?
Yes. I just wanted to point out one thing in section 25, I believe, or actually, give me one second so I don't turn to the wrong, section 26, I think, which is on the bottom of page seven, deals with a change to a statute dealing with confidentiality and I had that circled as needing to go before the Judiciary Committee before it's able to be enacted. So I just wanted to make the committee aware that I think that that additional step, and all it is, it would be sending this over in a memo form and explaining the interest between public disclosure and the reason for keeping it confidential and they would have an opportunity to take a look, just like when you create a new crime and just before criminal justice.
Is, now, a complaint being, the complaintant being confidential, is there any other, is there any place in law where that's not the case? Or is this consistent with, I guess, is this consistent?
Senator Brinkley, from the Division of Licensing, it consists, consistent across healthcare providers, it's consistent across our division as a complaintant. Otherwise, it would have a chilling effect on an individual coming forward to complain. So again, this is not a criminal unit where the accused has a right to address their accuser. This isn't an administrative arena. We do tell complainants, however, that if the information that they're complaining about, we may have to come back to them and ask them, or permission to give their name, if we use it in an administrative proceeding or if it ultimately ends up in a criminal proceeding. They're aware of that, which is why they're also allowed to offer up a complaint anonymously, which the department would prefer not to have that scenario.
And again, just to follow up on that, it wasn't, in any way applying to this raise, any constitutional, it's just that there's another step to the process.
But since you brought it up, I had to answer. Representative Sanderson, did you have to end up earlier? Any, any additional discussion? Do you know additional discussion? I'm not sure exactly how we want to proceed right now, we don't have a motion. I don't, we obviously don't need more additional discussion. We could have a motion, we could talk about where we want to go now, we could court a caucus, we could do any number of things. Representative Sanderson.
I guess the next step is if the, would he maybe take any action or is there more discussion?
I'll just say, I, having, having sat down, having, going through the public hearing on this and being very skeptical of what was contained in this bill originally, having sat down and talked with representatives of both the caregivers and the dispensaries on this, understanding a lot of their concerns, addressing many of those concerns, and working with the department on addressing some of those, I'm very much more comfortable with this than I was when it first came to us in the public hearing. Senator McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I feel pretty confident after working through the amendment myself. So I think the motion ought to pass as amended.
Second. Second, by Representative Bashan. Any discussion? Representative Gattin.
Yeah, and again, I'm just going to reiterate what I said. There might be some very good things in here. I'm not willing to vote in favor of this until I understand kind of the totality of where I'm going to be on all the other issues. So I mean, that doesn't reflect with any other member of this, you know, if we're going to vote now without having a good understanding of what we're going to do with the other bills, I'm going to vote no on this. And then when we work the other bills, there might be some things in here that I'm more than willing to amend into, into the other bills. So, again.
Can we court, court?
Thank you.
Yeah, no, just put my chair. I'm going, has anyone noticed how purple Canyon is?
I did.
It's very, very. The motion on the floor is ought to pass as amended. That being said, I would entertain a motion to table. Oh, all right, before we do that, I think there's some discussion on it. Representative Sanderson.
Well, it's not just discussion. I think after waiting all day, these folks deserve an explanation of what we're doing at this time. I mean, I think we have a general consensus, but I do respect Representative Gattin's feelings about wanting to see where we're going to be going with other bills as a package and if tableing this today until we have time to work all of them in conjunction can get us a unanimous vote out of this committee, then I think he deserves that due respect from, from the rest of us and I'm willing to do that to accommodate him.
Representative Henderson.
Thank you, and I really appreciate this approach as well because in my district, living right at the border of New Hampshire and having a big growing facility with caretakers who are in one big box that are, you know, it's kind of a sharecropper arrangement, I'm aware of a lot of problems and I'm trying to walk the walk of mitigating those problems with enforcement where, and not take away the, you know, the. with enforcement, and not take away the, you know, the caregiver's opportunities to express themselves through their knowledge of their agriculture, and so, we're trying to, I'm trying to walk that walk too, and I think putting these, looking at all these bills in total will allow me to do that better, so I appreciate this.
Thank you, Representative Sanders. Senator Haskell.
Yeah, I'm just going to throw a proponent of thinking here too, because this is not, this is not an issue that I take lightly, and consequently, the interaction and intersection of these bills to me is very important, and where we come out at the end is very important to it. I have been saying that to my co-chairs and my fellow caucus members in each of the meetings today, so this is not a limited perception that we need to do this in a unified way, and so I do appreciate the committee's indulgence in us working as hard as we can to get as much as we can right. Thank you.
Additional discussion, Representative Sanders?
If there's no other discussion now, we'll be...
Is there a second? I'm going to move it to Representative Sanders, Representative Gattin. To table, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, it's unanimous. Representative Sanders?
There was a request from Representative Simon, excuse me, Representative Him, for a markup version of those proposed changes, and I'd be happy to download the Word doc and show the markup and send that out to the committees sometime this week.
Thank you. I know we have four bills still, so, they're all have been tabled, so we don't necessarily, if we want, if we have reason to take them up, we can, but we don't need to necessarily take all of them up if we're not ready to go on them. LD5 is act removed, the limit on the number of patients a primary caregiver may provide for under the medical marijuana laws, that's due to some proposals and other bills, but I wanted to keep it around just as a vehicle in case we need it, but as soon as we're, so I don't think we need to take that up. The other two, the other two bills we have that are in this sphere of the regulatory world of the industry is 726, an act to increase patient safety, main medical marijuana program, and LD1258, act to amend the main medical use of marijuana act regarding business practices. I imagine that there are some things we want to talk on or work on there, these are kind of in this sphere, I imagine if we take them up, we want to table them again and work them with the department bill. LD752 is an act to permit medical marijuana cultivation by incapacitated adults, this is something I'm sure if we wanted to, and we were ready to, we could take up and vote on, we're not ready? I'm right, I guess we're not ready to vote on that one. So, yeah. Senator Haskell.
My question, I, like the rest of the committee members, I'm ready to reply as we need to, but if there's anything that we should have under consideration on these bills, I'm glad to hear it today, because it is still very much ongoing, and so I just put that out there, if anyone's found amendments or something that we ought to be looking at, I'm ready to, if not, reply to the rest.
My impression is that they're, these are ongoing things, but if, but I, Representative Sanders?
Yeah, as a sponsor, a couple of these bills, one of which, you know, could be rolled in with another, or et cetera, you know, I think without, I think we've done a lot of work to try and find consensus on some spots, there's still parts in others, and I think, I still think it would be beneficial, rather than laying out today of what's been done and working with these bills, that we continue to work with the dispensaries and the caregivers to find consensus, so when we next work these, we come in, we offer a cohesive plan that is agreed to, and we all agree, hopefully, the chairs can be to everybody, and be able to present that to the committee, they have a discussion on, and then we'll be ready to take an up or down vote on it without these fits and starts and stops, I guess, so, when do you think we would be taking these up again?
I hope not, Sunday.
When do we get it closed?
Wednesday?
Wednesday, well, okay, I mean, if it's Wednesday, I think we, as a sponsor of the bill, you know, we can, we just make it happen, make it happen, and be ready to do Wednesday with as finished a product as we possibly can, which may not please everybody all the time, but at least try and get as close as we can.
One thing I just wanted to get on the record very quickly, that was, just what we tried to, just, on the bill that we just tabled, I had said that we sat down with some of the representatives and the caregivers and the dispensaries and worked through some of the concerns, we did address some of those concerns, but I did not mean to imply that all of those concerns have been met and that there are not some concerns that remain, so I just wanted for clarity, since I did say that on mic, and I think it was misunderstood, or is my intent was misunderstood, I just wanted to say on mic to clarify that, so I'm not getting anyone in trouble, I'm not getting myself, most importantly, I'm not getting myself in trouble. I do not intend to say that there are no objections or no concerns about what makes the many bills.